Did I say that right?
1515 Ashwood Avenue. I see this as being similar to the last one, I'm sure the applicant will want to point out some distinctions between the two. It is an application to enlarge the house with an addition, but it also requires or proposes removal of the roof in order to build a new roof that's taller with a different pitch. The roof is unusual. The house was there in 1914 and maybe even a few years older. And side gables and front gable dormers certainly exist throughout the neighborhood, but they're not very common necessarily for a house of this age and style. So when we first looked at it, we weren't sure if it was original. But we can't really go on conjecture in determining what's appropriate. We have to assume, kind of assume that something is original until we know otherwise. Certainly that's a, you know, as the guidelines, Secretary of Interior Standards recommend against conjectural changes. It has this, the pitch changes in the slope of the roof. It starts out pretty shallow and then steepens as it gets towards the peak. It does that on both sides, the front and rear, but not quite the same, which is also unusual. But we went in the attic recently and from the framing, by all indication, it was originally built that way. If not original, certainly very old. The framing has a lot of age on it. It is a little wacky, you know, the side walls are framed with tongue and groove floorboards and there definitely is, are a lot of issues that would need to be reframed, but certainly the pitch or having a pitch change in the roof and the height of the roof appear to be their original condition or historic condition. And the application would be to remove the roof and dormers and reconstruct a new roof that doesn't have the pitch change and essentially straightens it out so that it's a single pitch and is taller, about a foot taller. I had to little estimate a little bit, but that orange line is the approximate line of the existing roof. So the new would replace that with a taller, greater roof. Replacing the dormers, currently two, three dormers on the front would, the applicant has, we've discussed whether the dormers are not original and whether two dormers or three dormers would be more appropriate. We're leaning very heavily towards the belief that those dormers are not original, even with everything else on the framing of the roof appearing to be historic. We just, nobody can believe that those dormers are original to this house. And we're fairly confident that the framing's going to show that when we get, when we can see inside. Currently it's, there's drywall and it would require demolition to confirm, we're pretty sure. So removing the roof in order to replace it with one with a straight, single pitch, doesn't meet the design guidelines for demolition because the roof, again, is an important feature of the building. The addition on the rear has a fairly minimal footprint, but it ties into the rear slope of the new roof and steps up two feet higher as it goes back. And of course, that is inextricably connected to the demolition of the structure. So the footprint of the addition, the addition steps in from the sides. It could be a case where an addition may be appropriate to be taller as it goes back and then goes up. But we couldn't, you couldn't unentangle or disentangle the addition from the inappropriate demolition. All that is to say that staff recommends disapproval of the proposal to demolish the upper story of the historic house at 1515 Ashwood Avenue, finding the proposal to be an inappropriate addition under Section 3B1A of the guidelines, not to meet, I actually have a slide that shows that, not to meet the criteria of what an appropriate demolition is under Sections 3B2A, 3B2B. And that staff would recommend disapproval of the proposed rear addition, finding that it does not meet the guidelines for height scale, roof shape, proportion and rhythm of openings. And the guidelines for additions, proportion and rhythm of openings is because the project requires pretty extensive reworking of some of the windows on the existing right facade, left facade. I can answer any questions. The architect is here and he can probably answer them better than I could.
Okay, any questions for Sean? Okay, thanks. Yeah, if you'd like to just state your name and address.
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. My address is 1702 Linden Avenue. We should have talked some before. I've got some handouts here. This represents, this got some photographs of some of those existing conditions as well as the dormer stuff. So Sean, I don't, I don't know if you and Tim spoke, but this is a little different from what Tim and I talked about Friday afternoon. Thankfully Sean and Tim were both willing to come over and climb up into the attic of this house. This is, we see a lot of stuff. And we didn't actually think the roof form was original because it didn't, for archetype, it didn't seem to. But what you can see in those photographs, the framing that we're looking at on this roof, it may have originally been two by fours, part of this is taken off, and they're basically one by fours turned on their side. It's basically pearlins holding up the shingles and, I mean, even the owner's roof, roofer won't get on this roof. So what we were trying to do with this particular house, given this sort of extreme deterioration, you can see knee walls built in front of knee walls and knee walls trying to sort of hold up a roof system that's failing. So we began discussions on this prior to even getting started on the design to basically get out in front and say, this was one of those roofs that we're going to have to reframe. It's crooked, there's a photograph, we took a picture of the back. You can literally see it just sort of points up in different directions. It's incredibly unlevel. Thankfully, and that's part of why we didn't think it was original, because the ground floor is actually fairly level, fairly straight, it's been fairly well taken care of. The second floor is just crooked in every direction. Staff feels like that dual or triple pitch there on the sides, original. My, I don't agree with that. I mean, I just think it is literally bowed in like that and been sort of fixed. But we can live and work with that. So as I said, Tim and Sean were willing to come over and look at it with us on Friday afternoon. And I did, Tim called me back Friday and I called him back from the car. And it was my understanding in talking to Tim that he was okay with us reframing the roof, that we couldn't work with that, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have to work with that roof framing, that we would reframe it. And he also, and he said that we would have to maintain that double pitch. And I said, well, that's fine, we can do that. I think for us and for the client, we just end up pricing this thing and trying to move to someplace that's safe, that my insurance will cover me working on this project, that we've got to reframe these conditions.
Yes. I thought I said that, that it definitely has issues that need to be retrained. I probably could have said it clearly, reframing was certainly necessary, but essentially it would be reconstruction, but we'd be looking at for it to be rebuilt with the existing pitch change.
Right. We can work with the pitch change.
Yeah.
But I think for me, the only thing I'm asking for in regards to, other than reframing, which means not even questioned, I mean, it's not even safe. You shouldn't be in that, she shouldn't be living in this house, given how it's framed. But all we're asking for is 12 inches of additional height so that we can reframe it with lumber. And it seems, if we know going into it, we've got to reframe it, I want 12 more inches of height so I can reframe it with two by twelves that would be structurally applicable, take the load, put it on the perimeter walls like it should have been, instead of trying to sort of load the ceilings of this house with this load across the frame of the roof. So the, really the only thing we're asking for at this point is the agreement that we do get to reframe it, to straighten it out, take the belly out of it, at least the belly and the ridge, not the belly and the slope. But then give us 12 more inches of framing dimension so that the space that the client has is not actually even less than she has today. The whole house is only about 26 feet tall. Her neighbors' garages are taller than her house. I mean, so for them, it's sort of like, I don't understand what the height thing's about. But that's all I feel like we're really asking for in terms of the existing part of the house, is 12 extra inches of framing dimension so that I can at least put back into that attic what's into that attic today. And frame it where it'll be co-compliant and structurally is safe and my insurance will cover it and everybody, you know, will be happy, her roofer can get on it. But just to basically straighten it out and frame it with actual dimensional lumber as opposed to one inch thick lumbers, which what you'll see in that photograph. In regards to the rear, because it is such a short house, we're asking that the addition be 24 inches taller than the ridge, which is pretty typical, we do it all the time. Because we want to add the additional height to the ridge, we're only asking that the addition be a foot taller, because we'll go off, 24 inches off the original ridge. That's not a problem. We've, your drawings, I think what was submitted, because it's gone through a couple iterations, show it pulled down to be within 24 inches of the original ridge height, which is about 12 inches taller than the ridge height that we really need. All this being said, if I wanted to ask for a 24-inch ridge raise, I could do that too. But as a professional, I'd rather not go that route. It was given to us as an option. I don't think it's a very attractive option. I think we'd rather keep the straight ridge across the house. I don't think you'll even notice 12 more inches of addition to that. And I think with our addition only being 12 or 14 inches, I forgot exactly, the height difference, I think we'll be a lot better off than a ridge raise. But that was certainly an option. But to take that ridge and set it in, it's just not attractive. It's not attractive on the sides, it's not attractive on the front. The dormer situation, it didn't appear that these were original. So we submitted it with two dormers. Sean wanted us to go back and submit it with three. So we revised our drawings to show three, but Tim felt on Friday that they probably weren't original and if we wanted to, we could have two. Two works a lot better than three, given the layout and the fact that the ceilings are already low. The dormers really provide some of the best walkable area in those two front bedrooms. So we'd rather go with two, so that's why I attached that, which is what we had on our initial submittal. And I know that's confusing. There's a lot of moving parts. And a lot's happened in the last two, three days, so.
We'll stay open, but can you, can you confirm what Tim said? Do we need to delay it so we can talk to Tim?
No, I think that matches up with what you and Tim, or we all talked about when we were all together. You talked to Tim and Tim talked to me, that two dormers. When we were talking about the original recommendation, you know, it was, we didn't want to speculate. But then having gotten into the attic, a little bit more comfortable saying that the dormers could be replaced, that they were not original. But that the, you know, the, for all we know, original and unique roof slope is original and that changing the pitch and height would not be appropriate. I mean, that's what Tim, I mean, Tim was pretty clear about that, much like with the last case. It's just a door that can't really be opened because it's not, I mean, it's.
I just wanted to make sure we're clear in what we're, so.
Yeah, he did say, we did the, we agreed we'd match the curvature, and he said he could not approve the ridge going up. And I said, well, that's fine, that's what I'm asking for today. And we wouldn't be asking for it if we weren't reframing. We just don't do that. Or I could have asked for a two-foot ridge raise, which would be sort of doing the same thing, but asking for something actually taller, which I really just don't find a very, that's the most obvious thing you could do to the front of a house is, you know, create a funny-looking ridge. So we don't ask to make things taller and we don't ask to manipulate roofs until we get to situations where it's frankly imperative that we do. And in this particular case, I don't think it's fair for the client to have to accept a foot less of volume in a very low attic when we get to reframe it and the visual on it is minor. So that's basically our request.
I was thinking the same thing that once the applicant brought it up. And we can review what's before us and we will, but on a ridge raise, which we've approved on other projects, and if this one is reframed to meet that, we might have a little bit different looking situation than we do. I'm curious about staff's opinion, maybe not specific to this project, and approval of what's not before us, but it seems like a true statement, something we've permitted in the past. If this had sort of the swooping roofs on both sides, I'm curious what a ridge raise would look like and would it be necessarily better?
The ridge raises have always cut into the underside as a way to distinguish them and show that they're part of the new construction and not an original form of the house.
I wouldn't necessarily think this would be different, but I'm curious if there's a little around there, but I think muddling those two things together doesn't seem like the staff's really keen on that as an appropriate solution in this or any other case necessarily. Okay?
All right. We might bring you back up as.
I'll be right here.
Okay, okay. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing unclosed public hearing. So I just want to make sure we're clear, because I think we are, I think I'm clear, but maybe just for the record. So on the, as long, what you are recommending, maybe I should say, is that it's built back exactly the same pitch and height that it is right now.
Yes. Staff, would you agree with the reconstruction with the pitch and height? And when you do interior demo, maybe we'll learn more along the way and find, you know, there's aluminum wrap on the fascia and just taking that off would probably tell a little bit more about the pitch. But as far as we know, pitch, height, original, and they would need to be retained or matched. It can certainly be reframed. As to a ridge raise, I mean, they've become sort of routine, but they get approved all the time on houses that probably don't need them. They would make the, you know, maybe they would make the situation easier here, but in our experience inside was, and Tim being more than six feet tall, taller than six feet, is that it seemed pretty tall inside, tall enough for him to be comfortable. And, you know, but obviously the larger rafters are going to have an impact on that.
Timing is everything, isn't it? I'm sorry? I did, I opened and closed it, yep.
So we're ready to discuss?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, this, we're in discussion now.
Just my gut feeling on this, it doesn't look like that, those dormers make any sense, those three dormers. And it doesn't look like it's original, just from my view of it. And it looks like his proposal is going to actually make the house better. And so I just want to, so that's just my aesthetic view of the project.
I think they've discussed, or I think staff's okay with the two dorm, I mean, I think that we've discussed that they don't think the dormers are original. I mean, the two dorm, I mean, I personally also just personally think the two dormers looks better. But the fact that they're, the three aren't original makes it, you know, that makes it okay. So that's one thing. Yeah, I guess just that. Hi Eden, I'd be interested to hear the architects' views.
Well, so before they go into the detail, just because we have comparisons of what we just heard and what we're hearing now, because, you know, they're going to go, oh, you, if we approve it, oh, you approve that, but this is not. So the, to me, the difference, and let's discuss it, is that the other one was total demo of a roof and putting a new addition and a whole new floor.
And that roof was sound.
Excuse me?
That roof was sound.
The other roof was sound.
Yes, the other, just.
It also looked like it was original.
I mean, I think where my statement on it before was that it was significantly altering historical feature and architectural of the house. On this one, it would be restoring it back to what it is and not adding square footage, it's just making it more stable.
If I understand, and you guys with more residential mail, but I think they're going to put it back to the same slope, it's going to look the same, but because the way we build now, it's gonna, you know, it's not going to be a foot, because it's going to be structured wise, it's going to have to be taller.
By a foot. Is that right?
I don't know that it has to be, there certainly are some, there's some critical details at the intersection of the roof edge, the framing and how the roof is supported. I mean, you can't just sort of, you know, just throw wood up there in any way you want to. I mean, it works top of the sill plate and sometimes these things weren't framed quite like they are, and, you know, you get wood turned on its edge and notched and it's not structurally as sound. I think there's a very, in the demolition, there'll be some field investigation that'll make sure we don't have a hump at the bottom of the roof. I want to make a clarification that I think the staff is leaning heavily on, is that a reconstruction of a, you know, unless there's compelling evidence, otherwise, that the slope in the roof now is not original through some demolition or other evidence presented, they're going on what they see and what they witnessed in the field and that it needs to be reconstructed with that feature. How that's done is in the details, but that is definitely distinguishable from, well, I just want a little more space up top and I'm going to add an extra inch per foot and the dormer's not going to match the roof in terms of its slope and I'm going to make it look better. Those things aren't the same in my mind.
Also, just because you're saying that, not diminishing any architect profession here, but was there a structural assessment made on the, you know, the property that?
I've got Sean, was there?
I'm still qualified and not a structural engineer, but I can say that that's standard.
Well, so, you know, when you're saying that this is not a stable roof and because the other one was, and this one needs to be reframed and reconstructed to make it stable and safe, was there another opinion, a professional opinion to this?
Tim Walker is an architect and he does it the same. But that's not where the two differ. It wasn't that the original one wasn't stable and this one isn't stable, or the other one was and this one isn't. They're both similar in the sense that they're both requesting a change to that original form.
I think that's what I want to get clear, is that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like there's a lot of evidence that it's not very stable, by the, at least by photographs that I've got.
There's evidence that it's stable, but is it not, I mean, he's, Tim, the architect, I mean, the structural professional.
Evidence that it's not stable.
That it's not stable. But that's not, but she says that's not really what we're basing our.
Oh, no, just answering your question, yeah.
Total decision on, because I mean, it seems to be a significant issue.
Well, it is one of the reasons why they're reframing it.
So proposing to reframe it.
Just for me, there was an image that showed the sod, that it seemed like they were, that one, is that how they, when they were actually trying to make it? I'll open it back up for, it seems like those lines, is that where they were actually, you know, mitering it to try to make the slope? Is that what I'm looking at?
That's aluminum wrap.
Yeah, that's the aluminum wrap.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think it's just got heavy. I mean, there's no, there's no, those shakes are not old, they're fairly modern. And I will say, the saddest thing about this is this person, my client's only owned this house for years. Someone sold this house as a renovated house with these conditions in it. So that's, that's bad all around. But the shakes are not original, but you'll notice in photographs, there's nothing behind the shakes. There's no tavek, there's no sheathing, and there's, if you're looking at picture, there is daylight coming through the shakes. And water literally leaks because of the flare on the, on the side there. As you can imagine, water just drips directly into the dining room. And this is a very nice house inside, but she understands that she's got some structural work to do on the roof. And to price this thing and to put it out to bid with the whole idea that we might keep it, or we might reframe it, or, you know, what does the framing look like? Is there still headroom in the closet? Do the doors still work? You know, can I use, is it co-compliant bathroom anymore? I mean, that's why we're trying to get out in front of this. We don't want to go price something that's going to look totally different when it gets picked apart. So we're out in front of it, and like I said, if you want a two-foot ridge raise, we'll come back and give you a two-foot ridge raise. Because frankly, the volume and getting it to work is more critical. But I do feel like with everything else going on here and the way the roof lines have to sort of intersect with the ridge raise, I think you'd be, I think everyone would be happier with that, but if that's what y'all want to do, we'll go back and do that. If you want to give me 12 inches, you want to give me eight inches, I'll take eight inches. I don't care, but we've got to have a little bit of framing dimension to put it back, because we're going to do crazy things like add insulation and air conditioning and all that stuff too. So it's, there's stuff to go up in this with any sort of modern renovation, so.
Okay.
That's really what we need. But we'll take whatever y'all are willing to offer us on this one.
Okay. Thank you.
So more comment, just reading the recommendation again. Any evidence of such alteration would be considered along with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for treatment of historic properties upon which the design guidelines are based. Standards for rehab. So one of that, two, three, and four, is changes to a property that have acquired historic significance in their own right will be retained and preserved. So we're saying, yeah, it could be, maybe it's not, you know, whatever, looking at that. And of course, there's a picture in here that says it's 1964, 1967, which, you know, talking about the three dormer versus the two dormer, that historic significance over 50 years seems to me that that has acquired its significance over that amount of time. It's just my interpretation of that. So just going back to how, you know, I know we're talking about structural issues here, but then we're talking about the historical structure and how we preserve that.
I can comment on what I intended when I wrote that. Keep leaning to the microphone, Mike.
It's working.
Not so much about the dormers in there, but I had not been in the attic yet when I wrote that, and there were two houses on this block in 1914. And they both have the same textured stone first story material, and the other one has a hip roof. So I kind of was thinking, if we get in the attic, maybe we'll find out that the whole roof is not original and that maybe, I don't know if you can tell what the original would have been, but like maybe it was hip like the other one, the two.
the two that were there at the same time. But when we got in, it didn't look like it had been replaced. Kind of, I was leaving the door open to say that if we get in there and find that the roof is not original at all, then the door would be open to, to reviewing it under different circumstances.
But Sean, the recommendation is to disapprove this. Are, are you leaning to say that this is not what you're recommending?
The application is for straight gable roof.
Like this, not with the sag in it. And I think, as I've heard, the staff's recommendation is that as hard as this is gonna be to do, that's what it is and unless we can prove otherwise, we gotta do that. And there are some other outfalls of that that the applicant has stated that, you know, certainly are acknowledged, but I think similar to the previous case, to not do that if we can't quite figure out that it's, it's not original and it's got, you know, it just is worn and embellied over time. But that, I think, is, is where the, the majority of, of the discussion lies and where the recommendation for disapproval is most rooted.
Is the only way to tell whether the roof is original or not is to demange, begin demolition?
I don't wanna say that the only way because I, I don't, there's not convincing or compelling evidence to say it absolutely was original, but certainly the staff and, you know, the director has been in it who has seen more of these things than I have and, and seems to think that it is based on the staff's recommendation.
Oh, they think it is original.
Yeah. They've not been able to find enough evidence otherwise. Pulling off and looking at some of the trim may not provide, that, that evidence may not be convincing, you know, either. And I think the applicant, who knows? And, and I think he's looking for some guidance as to what, what, um... This is brought before us, to, to say which direction do, do we need to go? And I, do I need to come back with something else and, and that sounds less desirable or, or for what?
And my thing is just, um, it, just building it now and getting it, even with the double pitch, kinda like that, um, is original, rebuilding it, it seems like it would need to get a little taller just based on, I, I know you said you can do it with just as it is. Maybe you can do anything.
I, I don't, I don't know that you can do it just as it is. I, I said it was pretty important how the roof, when you reconstruct it, is going to intersect.
Yeah.
And the overhang and, and the angle at which it comes in, how much structural meat is left in the lumber once you do all those things.
That's why I was...
Is there an E-Wall on the interior that, you know, when you start to segment this thing out, they don't make wood in that shape.
They don't make wood in that shape.
Right.
So the, the eight...
But you can't, I mean, you can take a two by twelve and cut some bow in it, but then you're, it's less able to, to
To do it.
To take structure on and it, there's a lot of gymnastics you have to go through. All that aside, you know, we had not the same case, but similarly, there was some constructability issues that caused the staff to make, to sort of work with an applicant that we heard earlier. And then yet they still, you know, that's, the issues in the field of construction aren't necessarily reason for us to say, nah, it's all right this time.
To be higher.
I, I think in, in a lot of ways, this is similar to the first instance that we saw and the guidelines are pretty clear that, that roof form is an integral part of the neighborhood and of the contributing factor of that house. Uh, I'm sympathetic to all the needs here and, and what has happened. I do think that it is important, going back to the sixties house, you can see that that same distinctive bow was part of the culture of this neighborhood back to the mid-sixties. So, so my sense with this one is that, is that yes, you know, we need to maintain that roof slope. We need to maintain that roof shape. And yes, it will have to be reconstructed. It's clear that a lot of the supporting walls, I think the perimeter walls will tell you more about what that actual bend was because the, the center of the roof can sag, but the, but the sides of it, the, the walls typically, you'll find members that are in the original place that they were in. And some of those are shown in the, in the drawings. The, um, you know, you're spanning sixteen feet across those front bedrooms, so it's, it's not an inordinate span, but, uh, my, my sense is that we really do have to stay with, allow the reconstruction, the structural reconstruction of that roof, but require that it stay in the same ratio that it is now. And if that means a two-foot roof raise, I think that will, we can allow, we can approve that within the guidelines. But I think just letting the roof raise is not something that we're, that's within our purview.
Do we have any more discussion about that?
Was probably the best wrap up of it. Do you wanna just wanna make a motion on that?
Sure. Might need a little help on the motion there. So I would say that with respect to property fifteen fifteen Ashwood Avenue, that, um, a move that we, um, disapprove the, uh, configuration as presented by the applicant and, um, that, um, in, in terms of clarification for the staff, that we require retention of the existing roof slope and position, including the bent curvature of it.
Is that all, before we go second, is there anything you would need with that?
And that a ridge raise may be permitted?
Yeah.
Yes, and I think...
The addition as designed with a ridge raise could be approved administratively.
He's added that. Let the record show he's added that to his motion. And do we, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Certainly.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Good job.
Fourteen oh four Linden Avenue.
Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the following conditions. Finished floor height shall be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Is this okay? Uh, to be verified by MHCC staff in the field. A sidewalk shall be added from the sidewalk to the front porch. The front porch shall be a minimum of six feet deep. A change in material shall occur between the foundation and the wall above. The front steps and porch floor shall be wood or concrete. That staff shall approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of windows and doors prior to purchase and installation. That staff shall approve the brick sample or the brick color and texture by sample. Staff shall approve the roof shingle color. The cement fiber boards shall be five-inch lap siding, uh, with smooth face. And that the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. These conditions, staff finds that this proposal meets the guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. And if you have any questions, I can go back and read the presentation.
Based on the way you presented, has the applicant already agreed to all the recommendations?
I believe they have.
Yes, they have.
Okay. All right, let the record show that the applicant has agreed to the staff recommendations. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, close, close public. Uh, she's made to notice that she was fine with all the recommendations. Okay, a motion to, do I have a motion?
A question for staff.
Sean, he's got a question for you.
Sean, the, um, the columns on the front look like they're sort of a eight by sixteen block with a brick wrap around it on the house of this style. I know we've said we wanted six feet deep on a house of this style, would, would we normally, would you see a square one? Do you care? Is that...
I think we've seen all sorts and being new construction, we're all right with sort of a modern interpretation. You certainly see this form on one story. And on, I see kind of maybe what you might say that it looks a little slender for a two-story, but maybe by doubling them, it, it sort of gives a similar...
If, if this, um, elevation is correct, there's a railing that probably will be added to, uh...
On the stair?
On the stair, uh, on the side of the porch that I imagine will match the wood railings at the rest of the house. But, uh, saving that, I have no, no further question.
Do you mind doing a motion while you're there?
Can I just ask one more question as well? Sorry, just, this is really simple. It, I mean, maybe I'm sort of not remembering, but on the front elevation there, the small window on the second floor, is, is that typical for a front facade?
I think so. We asked that windows or houses have a pattern, rhythm of window proportions similar to historic houses. Typically, they're vertically oriented, but you can have an accent window, um, that's, uh, that sets it a little bit apart. I think it, it still meets that intent.
Okay.
Yeah, this one being decorative and given the axial symmetry of the house, that one certainly doesn't bother me as others, others would. Does, um... Okay, good.
So I will, um, any other discussion? No, I'll move approval, um, of fourteen oh four Linden Avenue of the submission with the staff's recommendations.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, twenty-eight ten Linden, West Linden Avenue.
This is an application for an outbuilding and rear screen porch addition to this contributing home in Hillsborough West End. There's the addition and outbuilding outlined. The, the outbuilding is proposed at ten feet from the rear of the house. Uh, the commission has generally required at least twenty feet, um, because of the, um, the new outbuilding in the same location as historic outbuilding was. Uh, actually, a curb cut in place for the access to the historic outbuilding. And, um, if the outbuilding were moved farther to the rear, to the left on this slide, it would be closer to the residents behind it. This lot was subdivided, um, previously in kind of a strange area. So there's not as much buffer area as we're used to. So for these reasons, staff finds the location, the decreased distance between the outbuilding and the, the residence appropriate. One and a half story outbuilding, uh, rear screen porch addition. I'll just say that these meet the guidelines with the recommendation that the chimney, which is drawn as lap siding, that that be masonry or stucco instead. So with the conditions that the chimney, uh, is a masonry or stucco material and that staff approve that material, HVAC and utilities located for minimal visibility and staff approval of the windows, doors, and garage doors, staff recommends approval of this application.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? Is the applicant here or like to state your case or?
Agree with the recommendation to change the file.
Make the record state that the applicant did say that they were okay with the recommend, all the, um, conditions. Any public, open public hearing, anyone like to state anything about this project? Okay, seeing on closed public hearing, do I have a, a motion or a discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move with respect, uh, to this project, twenty-eight ten West Linden Avenue, that we, um, approve that project with the staff conditions.
Okay. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now we're back up to four twenty-two Broadway.
To go backwards in the presentation to the first slide for four twenty-two Broadway and then I'll just have one slide change for you and I'll let you know when. Um, I'll begin with some background on how we got to the current request. In twenty-eleven, as part of, part of an approval for rooftop and rear additions, the commission approved moving the existing rooftop sign to the rear wall. In September of twenty thirteen, it was discovered that the project did not meet the permit and since that time, the matter has been in court. On October twentieth, twenty seventeen, the court decided that the applicant should apply to the MHCC to retain the sign and this recommendation is in regard to that sign only. The applicant's request is to retain the new sign that is similar to the historic sign that was initially proved to be relocated. When the application was reviewed in twenty-eleven, the design guidelines for signage dimensions were not applied to the request since it was the understanding of staff that they were simply taking an existing sign and moving it. And there was no indication at that time that the sign would be fully recreated with an additional element added and with a different design, a slightly different sign. If you would change the slide, please. Had that been the case, staff would have encouraged the commission to apply all of the design guidelines. And here you can see the difference between the two. The one in the right bottom corner is the, how it looked originally and the other one is the current. Because the signage was installed in twenty-eleven, staff used the design guidelines in place at that time to analyze the appropriateness of the request. However, wanting to provide all opportunities that might currently be available, we also analyzed the current design guidelines. The project meets some of the design guidelines for signage, but not all of them, specifically location and projection, using both the twenty-eleven design guidelines and the current design guidelines. Both of those sets of guidelines do not allow for signage to obscure windows and architectural details and the sign is attached to a window, which was not shown on the original permit. The original application did not show the sign attached to that window. In addition, the sign projects more than the design guides, guidelines allowed for in twenty-eleven. The, so that the sign projects more than eight feet, whereas the design guidelines in twenty-eleven allowed for a maximum of seven and the current design guidelines allow for a maximum of six. Staff recommends disapproval, finding that the request does not meet the design guidelines from twenty-eleven for signage or the current design guidelines for signage, specifically for both of those, uh, the guidelines for projection and location.
Okay.
So how would this clarify then?
So the, so this sign that was installed, uh, because it wasn't the original sign, was in violation of the approval. Is that...
Right.
Is that correct? Okay.
So it was in violation of the approval at that time and doesn't meet the guidelines.
Thanks for the good question. Okay, um, thank you, Robin. The applicant like to come forward, state your name, state the case.
Yes, my name is Steve Meisner, I'm the attorney for Tootsie's Entertainment LLC. Uh, I will be brief. I'd like for you to hear from Bobby Joslin, who was the applicant.
And get your address too, please, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's my address, Steve Meisner. My office is at five four five Main Street Drive in Nashville. I have some handouts I'd like to give you.
If you'd give it that way.
Ms. Seigler is correct. This is a, a case that has a long history. Uh, the sign was initially installed in two thousand and eleven. The matter was brought before Judge Brothers in the circuit court after we tried the case twice at the sessions court level and won both times. Uh, it was, it was after a, a long period of discovery, we finally squared the issues up with Metro Legal and had a hearing with Judge Brothers. His order is attached as the last exhibit to the package I've handed to you. Uh, there's some things I wanna make clear, um, because of the unique nature of the way this is presented. The sign, as you see it on, on the slide by Ms. Seigler, um, has been in place since, uh, two thousand and thirteen, I believe. Since that time, there's been a number of things that have happened in discovery as it relates to what was discussed about the sign before it was installed. With respect to the size of the sign, and, and, and just to make sure that, that I'm guiding this discussion appropriately, there are three principal complaints, as I understand them from staff. One is the size of the sign, second is the location of the sign, and the third is the content of the sign. And for clarity, I wanna make sure that we're focusing on which content is being complained about. The only, uh, content that's being complained about is the bottom section of the sign, which says alley entrance. That is a content neutral statement and is protected, frankly, from any sort of, uh, regulation. I have deposed Mr. Walker and I have deposed Ms. Seigler. I've given you their deposition statements. Both agree that the words on the sign should not be regulated by Metropolitan Historic Zoning Commission, that the Metropolitan Historic Zoning Commission, by and large, has no issue with the words that are used on the sign. So the words themselves are not at issue. What's at issue is the addition of those words to the sign that was originally in place on the rooftop of Tootsie's before the rooftop addition, okay? So, let me talk about the size first. During the litigation, Ms. Seigler admitted that she approved a four by eight foot sign. She, after the, after, uh, the sign was installed, she communicated by, in writing to the architect and to some others that, uh, Tootsie's had been... and to some others that Tootsie's had been approved for a four by eight foot sign. She confirmed in her deposition that Tootsie's had been approved for a four by eight foot sign, and at the time of her deposition, she agreed that Metro had not measured the sign prior to filing suit against Tootsie's. There is a professional survey attached to the packet that I've given you that was submitted to Judge Brothers on summary judgment, and it was not opposed by Metro, that confirms that the sign is within the four by eight foot dimensions that were approved when the sign was originally applied for, okay? So the size of the sign is not at issue, and it hadn't been at issue. Judge Brothers ordered and didn't find in his granting of the summary judgment that there was any issue with the size of the sign. It is only now with the staff's recommendations for rehearing on the approval of the sign that the size has become an issue. The original sign, and you'll see it within the package provided by Ms. Eglar, the original sign was actually nine feet long, and she admits that the original sign projected nine feet. This sign does not project that far, it is an eight foot by four foot sign. With respect to the location of the sign, Tootsie's is simply again asking that the commission approve what was previously permitted. There's no question that Tootsie's was permitted to relocate the existing sign. The permit states the existing sign shall be projected off the rear wall as shown on the attached plans. In the package of materials that I've provided to you, it has the staff recommendations as to where the sign was to be located. The previous sign that Ms. Eglar had up showed that that was a staff recommended location. They did not want it on the rooftop, the owners wanted it on the rooftop. That drawing is where staff had recommended that the projected sign be located. When the sign was hung, it did not violate any public works ordinances, any height ordinances, or any Metropolitan Historic Zoning ordinances for it, for its height or for its size. By all intensive purposes, it had been approved at the location that it was at and the size that it was at. So the only issue, really, as we understood it throughout all the litigation, was the content of the sign, meaning the elements on the bottom of the sign that were added. I've already discussed to you what Ms. Eglar and Mr. Walker said about the right to control the words that are used on the sign, and Mr. Jocelyn has provided extensive testimony regarding the historic elements of the sign. At the time that the owners applied to have this sign put on the back of Tootsie's, new addition, we have some photographs that we provided to you, Exhibits 1 and 2, which Mr. Jocelyn will talk about, so you may want to look at those. The sign that you see on the left, the picture on the left, was the condition of the sign in 2008. The condition of the sign at the time of the remediation and at the time that the application was filed was in complete disrepair. It was dilapidated, it was rusted, it was falling apart. There's no question that everyone understood at the time that the application was made that we were going to put a new sign in. The question was, was, would Tootsie's preserve the historic contents and the key elements of the sign on the new sign that would be projected from the rear of the building? And to that extent, I'll defer to Mr. Jocelyn to talk about that issue.
Bobby Jocelyn, 630 Mercer Road, and members of the commission, I appreciate the time that you guys put into this. I share your burden being on the airport authority. Ben, you probably know the times involved in these commissions, and anyhow, we, I've been doing this 40-plus years. We've done quite a few restorations over the years. The sign that we took down that we were going to try to put back up, once we got it apart, I think you hopefully have some pictures of what it looked like, it was totally a really dangerous situation for the public if that thing, it came back up. Transformers were about to fall through it, the angle iron itself was rusted. It was beyond, actually pretty well beyond repair. So the deal is, we always try to use whatever we can in a historic sign. I mean, you know, the look that we were trying to achieve, we're right on target. I don't know of anything any different, that sign looks like it did in the 50s era. I don't know that I've ever gone through so much on such a small sign that fits everything that I think it fits as far as Metro goes. I mean, it's the alley, you can see the other part, you got your pictures where you can see the destruction of the, of the sign in 2008. Those are old pictures, and we're dealing with a sign here, we feel like it was put up in the late 40s, early 50s. So anyhow, I don't know, I will be happy to take any questions. We did exactly what I think was in the best interest for the city, for the public, and obviously Tootsie's as well. And it was really a safety issue that I think drove this thing to the, where we have it today.
Do we have any questions right now for Bobby? Okay, we might need you back.
Okay.
Any of you. Are you speaking as well, or?
No, I'm co-counsel.
Okay, okay. All right, open public hearing? Did anyone, anybody left over there? Okay, closed public hearing.
While the board is perusing, can you speak up, Robin? While the board is perusing the information that has been submitted by Mr. Meisner, I think it's important for the board to understand what their charge is as given by the court. So I'm just going to go ahead and read to you an excerpt rather than waiting on you to get to that section, which is the last section of the exhibits that have been presented to you today. And this is in reference only to the sign. It says that because Tootsie's never applied for a permit to install any sign other than the existing one, the commission never had an opportunity to review proposed modifications to the sign. Accordingly, Metro's motion for summary judgment is granted as to the undisputed facts that demonstrate that Tootsie's violated the guidelines and the permit by installing a sign other than the existing sign without seeking prior commission approval. The court goes on to say, Tootsie shall apply for, shall apply to, for, I think it means for, for the review, let me read that again, Tootsie shall apply to, and it says for, but I believe it just means to, the MHCC to review and approve the new sign that is currently projecting off the rear wall of the building within 30 days of the entry of this order. However, Tootsie's is not required to take down the current sign at this time. After the MHCC approves or disapproves the sign, Tootsie's may seek review of the MHCC's decision pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 137409 and Tennessee Code Annotated 279102, which basically set out their appeal rights. But I thought it was important for you to know exactly what the court has said your charge is, and that is to review it, and then give the applicants an opportunity to make their case, obviously, before you, and then you decide, okay? So I just, I just thought I would be remiss if I didn't share that with you.
And in the court, thank you, Ms. Jones, for doing that. And Ms. Eglar, in fairness to her, she also laid out the portions of the court's order that were relevant in her staff recommendations, so that was in her package of materials. The items that the court found created an issue of fact as to whether it was the existing sign are the words and the color of the green and yellow neon. Those were the only two issues that the court found created an issue of fact as to whether the sign that you're looking at now was the existing sign, okay? And what, what, what we have, what I'm trying to present as clearly as I can in a very convoluted case that lasted four or five years of litigation, is that Tootsie's position is very clear, and that is, the position, the items that Judge Brothers is pointing to are items that fall within the discretion of the owner as it relates to preservation of historic signs. The guidelines at the time stated that the historic elements should be retained. And what Mr. Jocelyn has said and would continue to say, and I think he would speak more to this if asked, about other historic signs like the Beaman sign that was recreated and other historic signs that have been recreated because of their age, that the historic elements of this, of the, of the existing sign were retained, that the spirit of the sign was retained, the Tootsie's font is the same, the Orchid Lounge is underneath to the right, there is an orchid painted on, it's purple, it's Tootsie's purple, the world famous is there, and it's a long skinny projected sign with neon loops on the end. Those are the historic elements, and what Mr. Jocelyn has stated and what I would submit to this body is that Tootsie's did, made its best effort to try to preserve the historic character of its sign. Tootsie's has no interest whatsoever in diluting or changing its branding. Tootsie's, by all intensive purposes, is a non-conforming building.
Okay, I appreciate, I think, Ms. Eglar, you had, appreciate that.
Thank you, I know it's getting late, I apologize.
Yeah, well, we just, we got your thing, we're just trying to make sure we're right here, so we'll call you if we need you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily in a position where I'm trying to advocate, so I don't want Mr. Meisner to feel that he has to rebut whatever I say, because I'm not necessarily trying to advocate, but I do want to make sure that the board understood what the court was charging you with, and the court weighed all of those things, and that was the summary statement with regard to how the court wanted you to treat that.
Yeah, we're to review the sign now because it wasn't reviewed earlier.
Correct.
For clarity, are we to review it per the 2011 guidelines? There's, in the recommendation, we're adding some language about current design guidelines. Was there any instruction that you might give or that the judge would give for how we should consider this?
I didn't, I didn't see anything in the case that gave any thoughts about what guidelines needed to be considered. I think staff has, has done an excellent job by anticipating either one and has done some analysis under both of them. It would seem to me that it would be the 2011 ones that would be, ones that would be appropriate for use, because that was the time that the applicant took the action.
Sure.
And so, to me, I would, I would suggest that it would be the 2011, but I think that they've considered both of them in their analysis, which I'm glad to see that they've done.
Could you clarify something for me? If we approve this sign in accordance with the 2011 guidelines, the sign stays as it is, right? If we disapprove it, then do they have the ability to go back and appeal and make this last for another six years?
Indeed, they do. They, any action that the board, because the board did not take any action on this sign because it was constructed without having come here first, then the, then the court has actually, is now asking that they do what they should have done previously. So whatever you decide today is also appealable, and that's what the court is contemplating in this order.
Question for staff that, depending on, some of this information may influence an answer or influence something that I should read to help inform me to make a decision. There's, the sign is deemed historic, or is that the applicant's, are those the applicant's word, or is the sign deemed historic, and so when you, if we're taking a historic element and it is to be relocated to a different place, it wouldn't necessarily be historic as an element. We've had some cases we heard today as an element if it were rearranged in some way to be compliant. Am I making a distinction that doesn't exist in that if there's a thing and it has a proportion and it's not okay here, it's suggested to be moved somewhere else? Is that part of what we're considering here? The applicant, at least I think I'm hearing whether the applicant is saying, yes, it is, but is that in fact part of the evidence, I guess, in this case?
I believe that's what I understood the applicant to say as well, but you may want to give him an opportunity to clarify as well if it pleases the board to do so. But that was what I was understanding, however, I think as I understand the facts from historic and upon reading the case, my understanding is that the sign itself was historic and needed to be relocated, not reconfigured, not reconstructed, not added to, not subtracted from, but that actual sign was the one that was supposed to be, I guess, relocated to a, to a different place on the property. And I'll have to yield to some of the technicalities to the, to the staff with regard to that.
It had to be relocated because they were putting a rooftop addition on it, so it was in the way of the addition.
Okay.
But I will say that the, the plans that were submitted by the applicant at the time of the addition stated reuse existing historic sign on new brackets, so we had no reason to believe that that was not the case.
Robin, if, if they were to move this historic sign to the back of the building, you said right now it's attached to windows?
Well, presumably the historic sign no longer exists.
This is new sign.
This is a reconstruction.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, but if, if they were to have reconstructed that sign and put it on the back of the building, where would they have attached it?
Well, originally, there wasn't a window in that location.
Because they made an addition.
So, so they, they show the addition and they show where the sign was attached to the addition, and at that time, it was not attached to a window. But the design of the addition changed without our knowledge, and so now there's a window in that location, which was fine. You know, that didn't, it was a change that should have gone through the process, it didn't, but staff didn't have issue with that, except for the fact that now there's a sign attached to it.
As a, I guess, one of, there was some discussion about the projection of the sign and its size. If the original sign still existed and it were attached in a location that was approvable, it would project
Further.
as much or more than this sign does, so as, as a matter, to that issue alone, the, if, are you, are you stating that because it was reconstructed, it's non-compliant and it's a new sign, is that part of, forgive me for not being, getting to the point of what a lot of this is about, but if it were historic, it couldn't meet the guidelines? If, if the actual sign were relocated to this location, it weren't in the way of a window, it would project further than is permitted, but
Right, so that-
I'm suspending that and saying, this is a new sign, and because it's a new sign, it doesn't comply. Is that part of?
Yes, historic or not historic, it was an existing sign.
Mm-hmm.
And as such, we didn't even review the size because it was existing, and the commission agreed they should be allowed to keep it, it's something they have, it's not appropriate to put it on top of the addition, so let's move it to the rear. But what was presented to us, and again, we don't go out and measure every single project to make sure that it's accurate, we go by the information given to us. And the drawing that the applicant submitted showed that the sign, seven feet, two feet off the walls for a total projection of nine feet. But again, at the time, we thought it was an existing sign that was simply being relocated, so we did not apply those guidelines for dimensions. If we had known it was a brand new sign, we would have, and you would have.
Timmy, so, Robin, if, before the addition on the back, would the sign have, have been set further south? Or would it have projected the same across, across the alley? Was there an addition to the back?
There's an addition to the top and to the back.
So, the addition on the back, did that add width to the building?
Not width, but it did add depth. Am I answering your question?
Into the alley.
So, so, before the addition, would it have extended
Over the right way.
Over the right way, the same way it does now?
Um, I'm, no, but that's never been an issue.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that-
I just didn't know if the addition on the back made it look
No, they-
extend further into the alley than it does now.
No, they, they proposed it with the addition, so we knew the addition was there, you knew the addition was there, not you personally, but the commission at the time knew the addition was there when they approved that location.
Oh, the addition was already there, okay.
They knew that it was appro, it was being requested. So the commission knew that the request was for an addition with the sign to be relocated on the back of the addition.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Or I'm not answering.
I mean, I-
Do the guidelines, the 2011 guidelines state similarly, and I probably should pay more attention to the staff report, but I just want to just hear it into the record, do the 2011 guidelines state that signage installation shall not interrupt architectural features of the building?
Yes.
That that has not changed, that text was before and is now?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if we're reviewing this as we're charged from, from the courts, you know, just as a- just as a new sign, let's say, it is already there, but we're reviewing it as a new sign, but to the 2011 guidelines. So, either way, even in the 2018, most of it doesn't comply, but 2011, signage should not obscure architectural features, the sign is mounted on the window, signage, the height of the sign is appropriate, but the design guidelines, sign projects, design guidelines allow for maximum projection of seven feet, the sign projects more than eight feet, and then the current design guidelines, we've even scaled that back more, so that's even more than the current design guidelines. So I just, with our charge of having to review it as a new sign, you know, and it doesn't fit the design guidelines.
And I would counter that if we're having to review it as a new sign at this point, that we ought to adapt the guidelines that are presently in place. But it's a moot point, because it's...
I don't know about that.
Well, I think, maybe it would be for a judge to decide, and I may regret bringing this up, but I think part of the applicant's presentation here today is that the sign was in a state of disrepair, that we've heard other cases today even, that there, through deterioration or lack of proper initial construction, maintenance, whatever, that we've had something that needed to be reconstructed and put together in the same way with the same elements as before. And I think speaking to that would, would, we probably ought to give some consideration for that, or maybe members already have, but I certainly wanted to not let that go asunder, considering that if this is disapproved, you know, there may be a different set of folks up here seeing this again at some future day, or maybe not. But I think that some, that doesn't discount anything that's been said about what guidelines should be applied to this, but I think giving some order to that argument, or hearing that in some way would help determine some facts in the case.
Were you kind of trying to say, saying that maybe if it had been, let's just use replicated, exactly like the old one, is that where you were going with that?
I think that's where the applicant is going, and then, if I understand the applicant's argument, they're going there, and we have to determine whether they got there or not, or that can be part of what we discuss. And they're also arguing that the part of the sign that was added is directional in nature, and that we can't, it's not in our, it's not our place to say yay or nay, up or down, is that good or bad, because that's the argument they're making. I'm a lawyer, and I'm not a judge. I don't know that they would see it in the same fashion, but I'm sure that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Anything you need to share?
No, I just, I was just trying to get clarity from Robin on how they were interpreting the guidelines as to some of the cases that you all had. Just wanted to make sure I was okay. But no, did you all have a question? I wanted to make sure. It sounded like Ben was driving up to one.
Well, you kind of answered it, but for some reason, I wanted you to hear it again, about that the staff looked at it both in 2011 guidelines and present day guidelines, but did the judge give us any, he didn't give any guidance, I guess, in his decision regarding which guidelines we should look at? I think you answered it, but I just wanted...
I didn't see that, no. I didn't see that in any of the information that I read. Of course, I was not the attorney that handled the case for Metro Legal, so I'm certain that that attorney may have something to add that perhaps I did not see. But I did not read that in the order, any direction given as to which guidelines to apply, but just giving the benefit of the doubt, really, to the applicant at this point in terms of use of the property and whatnot. The action took place in 2011, that was when they should have come here, if they determined that the sign was in disrepair such that it required an additional, you know, any additional modification, or was going to be in any way different than what this board had ordered. So again, I would advise the board to use the 2011. I don't, again, I agree with Commissioner, I don't think that it really, it may not really matter, because the ones that are in place now are even more stringent than what was in place in 2011, and you all have to decide whether or not they meet those guidelines as they were in 2011.
I'm sorry, I had to, you kind of repeated that, but I appreciate it anyway. Okay, so I feel like 2000, especially based on another piece of your discussion on what we kind of talked about today, basing it off of 2011, just so we're all on the same plane here, if that's...
I think it's helpful for us to know. I don't want to be the order. And I think we've been given some good advice from counsel, that that would be...
Better to go by. I mean, just...
If the judge decides differently, the judge decides differently.
So at least we'll be consistent among the personnel.
Robin, I think in this instance or any other, I wanted to clarify some things that I think I've read, and I'm trying to distill all this, is that the applicant was sort, the sign was a pole-mounted sign, and I know that it's reasonable to, that the staff would have gotten up and sort of drawn up, in this or any other case, done, you know, an exhaustive documentation of the existing sign, or of an existing house, or existing details that would need to be replicated for structural or fire or other damage, that generally rely on the applicant to do those things. It's the applicant's duty, I guess, to make sure that those things are, if they're presented in an application, that they're in fact the case, is that...
Well, in this case, we didn't know that replication was the request.
Okay.
So we didn't know to document or to ask for documentation. We were simply told the existing sign would be moved. So we did not see any need to document.
And you permitted on that basis?
Right.
Well, so, oh, we're from zero.
So, and it's hard to go through 39 pages in the midst of conversation and legal interpretations and presentations, but to the extent that I've been able to look at this and listen to what's happened, it seems to me pretty clear that at the time of the original application and the original approval for installation of the sign, it was clearly stated by staff that the existing sign could be relocated in accordance with the then-current guidelines, and that the staff acted appropriately in that regard. However, the applicant at that point in time not only changed the sign, but altered the sign. What we're looking at is not an exact copy of what was there before, and installed it in a manner that made it not in accordance with guidelines. And so I don't see that since it doesn't comply by nature of projecting more than seven feet from the existing wall, doesn't comply with the 2011 guidelines. So I don't see that we have the ability to approve that as a body.
Also, the signage location as well.
That's correct.
So those were three items that were mentioned.
I agree.
It's complicated, but...
Yeah, maybe just take it down. Well, do you want to do a motion?
Well, can we have one more conversation? Again, on the longevity of this particular case, is that how does, and let's be real, how, you know, if the applicant can continue to send this to review or to appeal, then how do we, as a board, handle that legally?
I don't think that's our purview.
It's not our purview.
It's up to the applicant to determine whether it's more cost-effective to replace with a conforming sign or to appeal. That's not our decision.
Yeah, that's their right, yeah.
So it can come back to us, yeah?
Yeah, I'm sorry, say it again.
So it can come back to us again.
It could, but it would probably be, at this point, unlikely on this issue, because the only reason it came back to you at this point is because it had never been to you to start.
Yeah.
That'll be a difference in any appeal that is forthcoming.
And then, of course, in the court order, it says 30 days from, you know, so it's noncompliance at this moment, according to the court order, is that correct?
Right, it is a noncompliance with regard to the fact that they had not come before us, or before you all. However, the court did give them the authority to allow the sign to remain until this body made a decision.
Well, it sounds like even if we make this decision, they could appeal it and appeal it.
But that's not, we don't, that's nothing that we need to discuss, that we need to discuss, if it fits and the guidelines are not, that's all we need to discuss.
And the board could, I mean, it's foreseeable, you know, I said that it's unlikely, and the reason I hedge even at that point is because the court always has an opportunity, if the court so chooses, to remand a case back to the board for further findings or further information that the court feels, you know, that they may not have had. But you all have done a thorough job in trying to discuss it today, and again, it's distinguishable from the first time, because it had never come back, come before you to begin with. And that was really kind of the distinction, but a court could do that, if they wanted to remand it back, they could do that too, I mean...
So what we're, because it's been deferred, I mean, I've looked at several of the, you know, agendas, and it's been deferred several, four times at least.
Correct, it did not come back, and I think that goes back to your initial question, it did not come before this board within the 30 days. I think initially, I'm not sure what all of the delays were, as I was not representing this board directly at the board meetings at that time, and I was not the attorney that was handling the case at that time, but I do understand that, I believe, one of the deferrals was at Metro's request, and then the other deferrals were at the applicant's request, if that helps you any.
So, just to be really clear, is that when this board makes a decision today, then the applicant must act, yay or nay?
I don't...
Act as in how?
If we disapprove it, then they will have to...
Well, if you disapprove it, then the applicant will have 60 days to appeal it to chance report under writ of cert, just like any other case.
Just wanted to get that clear out.
Yeah, just like any other case.
Okay.
You're into the motion?
Any more discussion? Okay, I will make the motion to, specific to 422 Broadway, that we go with staff recommendation in disapproval per the three items that Commissioner has brought forth, which was because of sign location, the projection, the replacement, and the projection.
We have a motion second, any more discussion? Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify one thing before you all take action. I said normally, they go to chance report, and so I think I mentioned that it would be appealable on a writ of cert to chance report, but I believe this order is actually out of Circuit Court, but it may be that it went to Circuit Court because it was appealed from General Sessions Court, I'm assuming that's how it got to Circuit instead of the chance report, okay? So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
So, motion is a second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, I think we might be done.
Just a couple little things, I just wanted to remind you that next month, you'll be voting on a new chair, vice chair, which we do every two years. And unfortunately, we are losing Commissioner Nielsen, she, her term is up, so the mayor's office and the council will appoint someone new, and so I'm hoping she'll be able to at least join us at the beginning of next meeting.
How many years is the court in?
I don't know, I'll have to look it up.
She's in the deposition paper.
Yes, before my time, so, yeah.
No, she's in the, or the initial, she's in this record somewhere, I don't know if it was a deposition, I think that was just Tim and Robin that got to post, but she's in... It said Commissioner Nielsen. I was like, oh, yeah.
I came in 2004, so I think she was here when I came.
Longest term, so...
Yes, we will take up that.
All right, hopefully she will. Motion to adjourn.